Ripton Status Review Committee Meeting to Order at 8:03. So for those of us joining, my name is Oliver Olson. I'm the Chair of the State Board of Education, and will also be serving as a Chair of this committee. So committee members, if you wouldn't mind just going around and introducing yourself. So Tammy, I'll start with you, and then Lyle.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I'm Tammy Colby, and I'm Associate Professor of Education at the University of Vermont and a member of the State Board of Education.
Kyle Johnson, Executive Director of the Chamber in Economic Development in Rockland, and a member of the board.
Kim?
Hi, Kim Gleason, Member of the State Board of Ed, former Chair of the Essex-Westwood School District.
Yeah. Jenna? You're on mute, Jenna.
I'm Jenna. Jenna O'Farrell from St. Downsbury, Vermont. I'm the Executive Director of Northeast Kingdom Community Action, serving Orleans, Essex, and Caledonia Counties, and a member of the State Board.
Excellent. Thank you. So are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay. Not hearing any. I am absent objection. I'm going to just reorder things a little bit. We had originally a review and approval of the minutes of our last meeting, as well as public comment first, but I'm going to put those at the end of the meeting because I understand from the folks in Ripton that there are, there may be some folks with time constraints. So what I would propose that we do is that we will, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Steve Cash, who's the Chair of the Ripton School Board. And I'll come right to you here, Tammy, in just a moment, to kick things off. And I'd like to go through and have Ripton do their presentation, and then do Q and A at the end. But I do understand that there are a couple of folks who will be speaking, who have some tight time constraints, including the financial consultant. So in the case of the financial consultant, who's really a critical resource, I'd like the opportunity for us to ask questions during that person's time. So Steve, and then I'll come here, Tammy, actually before I hand it over to Steve. But Steve, what would be helpful, because there are a variety of folks, is if you can give us a summary of whom will be testifying. And for your consultants and experts, if you can identify who's a paid professional versus a volunteer, that would be really helpful to know. So Tammy, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, thanks. I know, I know we have time constraints, but just before we start, and it would be helpful to me to just understand clearly what exactly our charge is here. After reading the report, I'm admittedly a little confused. Is our charge to review and assess the extent to which Ripton would be a viable supervisory district on its own? Or are we also charged with the responsibility of assessing the extent to which this relationship that they're proposing with Lincoln as a supervisory union is viable as well? Because there's a lot of, the report sort of speaks to both of these things and goes back and forth. And I offer that not necessarily as a critique of the report. I just, for me, I want to be clear about what we're asked to do here, because it seems as if we've got potentially two moving pieces at the same time. So if you could help me clarify, clear that five for me, Oliver, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay. So for a little bit of background for everyone's benefit, in January of this year, well, there's a lot of background, but the most recent background is in January of this year, the State Board of Education sort of concluded the withdrawal effort for Ripton, and designated it as a supervisory district. Since that point, the legislature passed H. 727, now Act 176. And under 727, which was crafted, the relevant section was crafted with the Ripton School District in mind, I'll just quote from the law as passed. So it outlines what the obligations are. And it says, "Honor before the regular July State Board meeting, in the year in which the review will occur, the new school district shall submit a written status report to the board detailing the actions the district has taken and will take to ensure that, as of its operational date, the district will be prepared to assume sole responsibility for the education of its students in pre-kindergarten through grade 12 in a manner that will meet education quality standards as required by 16 VSA 165, and to ensure the provision of supervisory services." The status report shall include a timeline indicating the date by which each action shall be complete. So does that, does that help answer the question?
If I, if I may sort of speak back to you, let me be clear. What I think I just heard is that our task as a subcommittee is to consider the extent to which Ripton is ready and able, has the capacity to stand alone as a school district. However, in consideration to the extent that there is some reliance on a potentially new supervisory union, we need to consider the viability of that supervisory union and the ability of that supervisory union to provide the services and supports that they are so saying they will provide, correct?
Correct. I think that's, that's fair. The one caveat, of course, is that the State Board has already made a decision about Ripton being a supervisory district. We've not considered or made any decisions related to a new SU. So I think there's a bit of, there's a bit of speculation.
That is also one of my questions, which was, we haven't even created this new SU. And so I'm feeling very carton horse here, right? Where we're talking about delegating services or receiving services from an SU that the State Board hasn't even created yet.
Correct. Kim?
I think I shared that question as I read, and I was, I look forward to hearing in and among the contingency concerns, there seemed not to be this idea that, that there may not be a separate SU. And so consequently, I was reading and looking for, and I'll look forward to hearing from the group from Ripton, what is the situation regarding a full supervisory district budget and services consideration? Or is that just not possible and thus not addressed? And I don't, I look forward to just understanding more about that, because the presumption from the very beginning was a situation that does not currently exist. So, okay, I share that observation and concern, and look for more information in that regard, if that's helpful, Mr. Cash.
Yep. I think that would, Steve, that would be a good thing to address. I did see something in the report. I don't have it on my fingertips, but there, I recall there was some statement of the effect that Ripton did not believe it would be viable to operate as a standalone supervisory district, but I'll let you comment on that.
Yeah, that statement is on page five.
Okay, thank you. So, so that becomes an issue for, you know, for some reason, if some of the assumptions here don't hold true. So, Mr. Cash, if you could just start by giving an overview of whom will be testifying, and which sections of the report they'll be speaking to. And also, I think it's really important for us to know who's a paid professional versus a consultant, because there are a lot of names in the mix here, and we want to know who's who.
Yeah, all right. So as Oliver indicated, my name is Steve Cash. I'm the Chair of the Ripton School Board. And yeah, I certainly do want to circle back to the question of what is the situation regarding a full SD budget? As is indicated on that page that was referenced, we have determined through our work in this process that for Ripton to be a standalone school district simply is not feasible. There is just no way that we could make those numbers work with Ripton being the size that it is. So we can, I'm happy to discuss that further. As Oliver indicated, we do have some time concerns constraints, particularly with our finance person. So I want to kind of tee her stuff up as quick as I can to take a rundown through the consultants that we have been working with and will be presenting today. There's Brittany Gilman. She has been doing a lot of work in the finance area for us. She is a paid consultant. Dylan Patrick, he is the main author of that report. He did a lot of consulting, kind of in organizational structure, and just kind of general education. He is also a paid consultant. Another consultant is Jeff Valance. He'll be speaking to staffing, curriculum, and kind of overall school structure and philosophy. He is also a paid consultant. And then Tim O'Leary, he's going to be speaking to technology and curriculum, also a little bit of school philosophy and structure. He is a volunteer. And then Jane Finney, she is one of our consultants as well. She's also on the Ripton School Board, and she is a volunteer. She'll be speaking to mostly staffing and just kind of general operations. She has a number of years of experience in education, including being the previous principal at Ripton. So with that, did that cover all the bases, Oliver, you requested?
Yeah. Well, I guess a question on Brittany, because I know you indicated she was only available for 15 minutes. And I guess I'm a little disappointed or concerned, because that's a key area that I think, I know I have quite a few questions. And, you know, this has been on the books here for weeks. I would have expected a paid consultant to be, have a little bit more availability. So I don't know, Brittany, if you have a little bit more flexibility in your time, or if there's someone else from your firm who can stand in for you. But it just feels like 15 minutes is not sufficient.
And I do want to acknowledge that misunderstanding as far as scheduling. When I read your email, I understood that we would have multiple days to have those experts available. So we scrambled everybody last minute to get them here on Friday. But I will very much own that snafu. That is clearly on me. And I don't want to speak for Brittany, but what I would anticipate doing is making her available potentially an additional time. I know we talked about doing the recording. It didn't seem like that was a great fit. So we tried to get everybody here on Friday.
Okay, fair enough. So with that, we'll, we'll, we'll take it from there. Oh, Kim, did you have a quick question? Nope. Okay.
All right. So I'll just start off with a brief opening, and then I'll turn it over to Brittany. So as I said, I'm Steve Cash, the Chair of the Ripton School Board. We would like to thank the SBE for giving us and our experts the opportunity to speak with you regarding Ripton's status report. The report is the culmination of hundreds, if not thousands, of volunteer hours and the hard work of our consultants. We are proud of it. As a volunteer board, I believe you certainly understand the challenge of such an undertaking. In spite of the challenging work of the status report, this is a task that we feel has allowed our work and planning for the future to come more sharply into focus. We have much to do, but we believe in the path we are on, which you helped determine, and we hope you recognize the work we have completed. As I wrap up, I'd like to remind you of two phrases contained in Act 176. If the State Board determines that it is likely the school district, the new school district will be prepared. And if the State Board determines there is a reasonable risk that the new school district will not be able to be prepared, it is based on one of these two phrases that the State Board of Education will have to base their advisory opinion. I hope all of you contemplate and decide which of these two phrases aptly describe the Ripton School Board's ability to complete the tasks ahead of it. You will assess, I hope you will assess the situation honestly, fairly, and with the recognition of the impact of an engaged community can have on a child's education. And I think with that, I will turn it over to Brittany. Let me just open the participants here. Brittany, are you ready to go?
Hello, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for having me this morning. I do apologize for the time constraints. So what I'll do is I'll just, you have the data that we submitted. I'll give you a really brief overview of where we are in our thought processes, and I'll try to take some questions. And then, as Steve said, maybe if we're not able to get through that, we can arrange another time. Our general budgeting approach thus far has been, I would say, conservative. So we're assuming higher on the expense side, lower on the revenue side, just because of some of the unknowns that we have still at this point. This budget is a supervisory union model, which I can see has, has already been discussed and will continue to be discussed. So this centralizes costs that we would normally call central office. It centralizes special education, transportation, audits, anything that's required to be centralized at an SU level. And it also provides the opportunity for other shared staff, which you'll see in just a minute. Gives us the ability to employ positions at the SU that would otherwise be very fractional and get it closer to 1.0 FTE. So, excuse me, from a wages and benefits perspective, for every school district in the state of Vermont, that's the main portion of the budget. It's, you know, typically at least 70% of the budget. So that's sort of where we have been placing the greatest amount of focus to try and get the staffing model right. From an estimation perspective, we're able to estimate wages and benefits with reasonable certainty, given the information that we're able to get about what staff is currently being paid in the area, collective bargaining agreements, the statewide healthcare bargaining, and just making some assumptions about how those things have been trending. So that's how we're able to estimate the wages and benefits. At the supervisory union side, for central office staff, what we would normally think of as central office staff, we have a 1.0 for a superintendent and special education director combo, I guess. That's a 1.0 FTE. We have a 1.0 executive assistant, and then a 0.6 finance manager, business manager type position, with the idea that some finance will be outsourced still, things perhaps like payroll. And then from a special education perspective, we have one special educator and one para educator that would be shared. And then we also have some shared staff, so things like guidance, library, art, music. Those positions were putting at the SU level so that each district is able to use a portion of them, but that the position itself is able to be more full. And then from an assessment perspective, we are proposing, sorry about that, in this model, that the central office and special education positions and related costs would be assessed based on some enrollment count, like ADM, and then other costs like transportation and shared staff, which we're able to more accurately determine exactly how much is being used by each district, would be billed back on a direct usage basis. From the revenue side, still working on figuring out what the special education block grant may actually look like, as well as other grant revenues. Many of these costs are based on prior year costs, which Ripton doesn't have any prior year costs, because they've been part of a unified district. So there's a little bit of a challenge figuring out how that might be calculated. So really, we're looking at districts in the area, you know, figuring out some sort of way to prorate it, to figure out what may be reasonable based on the size. But there's more work to be done there to determine what that might actually look like. And then that flows into the net assessment at the district level. And then at the district level, for wages and benefits, the model looks, I would say, nearly identical, if not identical, to the way that the school is functioning now. So three classroom teachers, they're mixed grades, K1, 2, 3, and a 4, 5. That's how they function now. There is a .2 Spanish, two regular ed paras, an administress slash bookkeeper position that helps with purchase orders and receiving, a halftime principal and a halftime custodial staff. So again, those are in place right now. There are some costs like utilities and supplies that we're able to look at, even the unified district budget for ACSD, as well as, you know, pre-unification budgets, to make estimates about what will be in, what the school will be using as a standalone district, because those costs are already carved out in the district budget. There are other costs that are not, that you, we have to make some assumptions about. Sometimes we have to look back at the last budget that Ripton has as a standalone district and make some assumptions about escalating those costs. And then sometimes we're able to sort of assign a per-student amount, if it's reasonable to do that, to estimate our costs. One thing that is included in this budget that Ripton has never had to contend with, our secondary tuition. Even prior to the unification, Ripton was part of a union middle and high school. So there were not things like secondary tuition, and there was also no special education excess cost. So we don't have that history. But from a straight tuition view, we're able to look at the number of students that we estimate, and we can see that there has been relative stability there at the secondary level. And then look at what the announced tuitions are in the area. And we're able to look at that and determine an estimate for secondary tuition. The same holds true for tech center tuition. That's based on a six semester rolling average. And I think all of the students in general in Ripton and in that area, almost all of them attend Hanford Career Center. And so we're able to look at what the tuition has been at Hanford Career Center and make estimates based on how that might increase to determine that. From a pre-K perspective, we're going to, we're budgeting the UPK model, so utilizing universal pre-K partners in the area. And then we're able to determine the amount of students we feel would take advantage of that, you know, of families that would utilize that, and then estimate what the UPK rate is, the 10 hours a week that would be provided. So that's how we're estimating that. And then there are a couple of other costs, so debt service. We know what the debt service is for Ripton. We know what the bond is and how that's going to play out for principal and interest. For tech and some facility repairs, we're proposing outsourcing much of that. So we've included some costs here for startup costs for things like a financial software and a student information system, and what that's going to take to get that up and running. And then a small amount for food service support. So many school districts in the state, the food service programs are not self-sustaining. So there's a small portion of the budget that's dedicated towards supporting that program. And then from a revenue side, there aren't that many revenue at the district level. There is tuition revenue for Ripton, and that's something that we're able to look at based on the number of students we know have been attending Ripton from a sending town like Hancock or Granville, and we're able to estimate an announced tuition for Ripton. The Small Schools Grant is based on the pre-merger grant that was coming in when the unification happened. All the schools that were getting small schools grants kind of combined. And now the ACSD gets one lump small schools grant. But we're able to look back and see what that amount was, and we're using that amount as an estimate. And then there's a small forestry grant, sort of federal revenue that comes into Ripton every year, and some other miscellaneous income. So that's, that's how the budget's developed right now in terms of a tax rate. We have not considered that, we don't consider that a useful metric right now just because some of the uncertainties about what equalized pupils could look like, which is a really important component to estimating the tax rate, how the weighting study might impact that. And then some other, you know, revenues, such as the grant revenues and the special education block grant that I referenced, could have an impact. And then just, you know, all the other pieces of the tax rate calculation that are variable year over year, like the property yield and the CLA. It's just a bit early at, I think, to be estimating what that impact might be. So that's sort of a brief overview. I'm, I'm happy to take questions for a few minutes. I know that folks.
Yeah. Yeah. So a few questions, I guess, on the, and on the, on the tax rate. Again, it's always tricky looking forward to try to estimate tax rates. But for, for current year, it, you know, that, that's pretty common for comparative purposes to, you know, because you can, you have known numbers that you can work with. So I, I think it would be really helpful for, for everyone, both the board and, but also the voters as well in Ripton, to really understand apples to apples comparison, what would the tax rate look like this year if you were in this new structure? So that takes some of the variability out. So I guess that's, that's sort of a comment and something to think about. But my, my first question is really around, I'm trying to understand the taxing mechanism for your interim budget.
Yeah.
So when I read through the report, it indicated that, that the funding for this interim budget would be levied as a tax, and it would just be a tax on the tax bill. So is this, is this a tax on the entire grant list? Or is it, is it, because we have a statewide education funding system.
Yeah.
So the report implies that it's just going to be a flat tax rather than going through our traditional mechanism?
Yeah, I don't, so Steve, I don't know if you can speak to that. That, that part of the report was not developed by me?
Okay, so well, I know you're pressed for time, so I'll come back to Steve on that one. The other thing, two other things I noticed is I didn't see any, any reserve funds. And particularly around facilities, I was reviewing this facilities planning report that the ACSD issued a few months ago. And it identified over a million dollars in deferred maintenance and indicating that there's some significant issues to be remedied at the school. So I would have expected to see a facilities, you know, capital reserve fund to deal with that. And I don't see that in the budget. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so from my experience, most districts that have capital reserves fund those over time. So most districts are not putting a large lump sum in a capital reserve one year. They may, what they generally do is use the surplus from their prior year to fund it. Whether or not, I'm not aware of what the arrangement is, whether Ripton is going to take any existing surplus from ACSD, if there's going to be an apportionment of that. If there was, I think there'd be conversation about how to establish a reserve fund. I think that there could be conversation about building in a standing line item, a small amount of a transfer to a reserve fund. And we have talked about that, but it hasn't made it into the budget yet. But for, you know, establishing like a $200,000 reserve fund or something like that would not, would just not be feasible in the budget in year one, unless there was surplus from the prior year that we were able to recognize and roll in.
And then one, one more question on the, I don't see a tax stabilization reserve fund. And I guess with going in the land of tuitioning students, one of the big problems is with unanticipated or unbudgeted students who show up. So most districts typically have a stabilization reserve to deal with that problem. Because if a district Ripton size, if you have, you know, even five unbudgeted students roll in that you have to pay for, it's going to topple over your, your entire budget.
Yeah, and it's the same, it's the same issue. So those stabilization funds are developed over time using prior year surplus, which we don't have the luxury of at this point. So that's where that stands. I think that both, you know, having reserve funds is critical, but it takes time to build those up.
Yeah. Okay. Board members, committee members, anyone have any questions?
If you, if you don't mind, I would just like to comment real quick on the tax rate question. So I agree, a lot of times, you know, you look apples to apples. I think for me, a big worry that I have is equalized pupils, because equalized pupils is at the district level for ACSD. It's not at the school level. So I do think we could work with Brad James, for example, to get an estimate on what that would look like for Ripton at the school level. So that's more work to be done.
And then, oh, one other question. So I noticed in the report for the, the transition budget, in the timeline, it identifies November 5th as a kind of a milestone to secure funding for the interim budget. And then further in the report, it identified potential sources of that funding, including a legislative appropriation. So I'm just curious, what, what actions you're proposing to secure a legislative appropriation by November 5th?
Excuse me, I think that would be another question for um the other folks. The tran- from a transition budget perspective. Um, we, I did review that, um, but for the funding mechanisms themselves, we talked about some ideas, but that portion of the report was not written by me.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
I, I can stay for another couple of minutes though if folks have additional questions.
Uh, Kim, looks like you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, I, I have a lot and I know the time is short, so I guess I just want to. I'm going to sort of go in order of what I need to understand. How a transition happens and maybe that is not something that you can speak to, but. I see that there was a budget approved for transition through Ripton and I assume sharing of expenses and establishing the SU. That Lincoln would. Would match that money. And I don't know how they, or if. They would have put a. Transition budget to their voters or who's, like who's paying for that and why are some of these expenses not matched? For instance, Ripton has zero for sped consulting, but Lincoln has 3,000. How does it apportion moving forward? I can't recall. Enrollment numbers as they compare to one another frankly, just because we've consumed a lot of information from both. Districts over the last several months, so I'm wondering, moving forward. This is a shared transition expense at a 50/50. What does that apportionment look like moving forward?
I think that it. From a consulting perspective, it probably differs based on the agreements that they have with consultants. From a finance perspective. I, are, are you talking about the consultants or the January to June budget that the shared January to June transition budget?
Um, present until January 1/23, it's page 11. I guess I'm just really trying to understand, it sounds as though. Ripton. Put a transition budget to the voters. I don't know where that's coming from. I think Oliver asked that question. Um. And there is an assumption of Lincoln sharing the cost of standing up an SU. And. I, I don't know that there would have even been an opportunity for Lincoln to have put a transition budget. To their voters and if not, or if so, how and where does that 35,000 for transition? Coming from Lincoln. To even consider whether a transition can happen. In sharing those expenses. So I'm, I'm just looking at page 11 and. I, I just because for, with limited time, I'm trying to start from the beginning and understand how a transition could happen.
Yeah, so I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, but any of the mechanisms surrounding the transition budget, I think will have to be answered by others. Um, that part of the report I was not very involved in, except to look at the budget itself.
Okay, I know that at another time I'll definitely have, I have a number of questions on the more detailed and summary budgets for. The SD and, and presumed SU. Um, but I think that those are more extensive and would take more time, so.
Okay.
Uh, Tammy?
Brittany may have just answered my question for me, but let me just confirm. You, you, you were not part of the process of developing the trans- the phase one or the phase two transition budgets? You looked at them and you think they're appropriate, but you. Were not part of the process of developing those.
Um, that, that, that's accurate, yes.
Okay, so questions we have about those components. Which are quite important. To who, who do you know, to whom do you ask those questions?
Steve, can you speak to that?
Yeah, um, so I can speak to a couple of these and I will cir- circle back to the taxing mechanism question. Um, so as far as the transition budget.
Oh, sorry, Steve, if I can pause, I just want to make sure because Brittany, I know you have to go soon, so. If we can hold on, on Steve, you, um, your response until we. I, I want to make sure we make good use of Brittany's time. Are, are you okay with that, Tammy? Yeah, okay.
I'm just trying to get clear about.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't answer that with more.
That's all.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't answer that with more specificity. But um, you know, I can, I can. Make myself available for a bit longer because I, I do want to be respectful of your time too and you've all come here expecting to be able to get some answers, so.
Um, committee, committee members, any other um. Questions um. For, for Brittany? Uh, Kim?
Um, I, I guess without delving into any sort of line by line, I'm. Much of what was described in the report. For the um SU services, a lot is being outsourced to consultants and I'm not sure that I'm. Seeing. Where those consulting costs are factored in. And I apologize if I've missed it.
Oh, yeah, that's, they would be under thing, um, professional services or purchase services. So like fiscal purchased services. And then special education purchase services, those would be things like um OT, PT, things that you wouldn't have on staff. Uh, I'm not sure what else.
I don't, maybe I'm not. Okay, I've got it up, so I'll find it.
Okay.
But.
Any place you see purchase services or professional services? That points to some sort of outsourcing, whether it be consulting or. You know, other professional services like I referenced, like a. Perhaps a behavior interventionist or a physical therapist, many schools don't keep those on staff, so. And then um, there'd be like technology purchase services at the district level for technology services.
Um. Got it, and I, I think this isn't again for you specifically and I think um given timing and. Like any specific line item questions, we may want to hold off or send to you in writing, but um. I am, I was struck by the. Outsourced fractional business manager services and all that. Seem to be a allotted to that in the SU planning. And that again, it may not be a you question. Um, just having some familiarity with what it takes to oversee all the things that. Um, are, were being. Um, delegated to the business manager, it seems. Surprising that that could all fall under. One fractional resource, so I think that that is a question probably for others. Um, and, and it just struck me. As I read, so. I'm sure that your budget development was presumptive of that and I, I question whether or not that's actually. Doable.
What, whether or not a, a business manager, a .6 business manager could do the duties of a business manager or whether. The amount that's being outsourced. Was.
Possibly both and it seemed as though like transportation was falling under there. I couldn't figure out where pre-K was falling. Um, there, there's a. And I know facilities. Like the overall supervision of many functional areas, not to mention budget planning.
Mm-hmm.
Um, fall under a business manager at a fractional amount. And um, may in other districts. Happen by. By being directed to. More than one body, much less a fractional body. And I think it is hard to. I don't, I guess I'm just thinking again from experience and I'm not sure the number of students dictates the amount of time necessary. For those areas that have been. Um, directed to this fractional consultant.
Yeah, some, sometimes not, right? Sometimes it's often more about the number of employees. Um, which correlates to the number of students. Um. In my experience as a business manager, it's pretty common for those areas to be under the business manager. So the business manager isn't necessarily a facilities expert, but they oversee things like RFPs and they, you know, they do the fuel bids. And they go out to um. They do the bond work, you know, if you have to go out to bond. They're not a transportation expert, but they liaison with the transportation company. Um, I did that at ACSD on, on both counts. Um. You know, they're not necessarily like, they usually work with the superintendent to perform HR functions unless you're large enough to have a specific HR person. They oversee payroll, sometimes often in larger. SUs or districts, the payroll is, there's a person that their whole job is payroll. Probably not warranted for a staff this size, so I can definitely um. You know, I can work with the team to kind of respond to some of those questions or concerns specifically. Um, and I, I do think that that is one thing that could evolve based on our conversations, whether .6 is appropriate, whether we want it to be a 1.0. And sub out less. Um, but it's pretty common in my experience for those roles to at least be supervised by the business manager, even if sort of the day to day. You know, is done by the custodian for facilities and the superintendent for HR and things like that.
No, absolutely. I, I understand that. I was just struck by the volume that was being. Uh, um, delegated to that, that fractional position.
Yeah.
And um, recognize even as you were just running through a not fully comprehensive list that, that um. You know, it just struck me as being a concern.
Yep. That's fair.
So, uh, Brittany, a couple of other questions. So on, on page 30, um, section dealing with, uh, with tuition, tuitioning. It, it states that um RSD plans uh to function as a 6 through 12 tuitioning district. Um, and that the budget amounts um for those grades. Are to not exceed the lesser of the statewide average to announce tuition. So that struck me as a little bit curious um why you would choose the. Uh, statewide average as the basis uh rather than. The schools that students, where you know that they're likely to go. Which I believe are, are more expensive than the statewide average.
Yeah, so. I think that at this stage in the game. That's where we are. I think further in the development process, I mean. In my first role, when I was part of a supervisor reunion that. Had um secondary tuitioning and it was much larger, it was pretty extensive, it was Rutland Town. Um, we would have the guidance counselor, the eighth grade guidance counselor. Survey all the students for an estimate on where they were going and we also had a. Pretty high contingent of students that did use that statewide average because they went to a private school. Um, so I would imagine that you would do something. Like that. Um. But we're just not there right now. I can tell you the amount that we did use though. Um. Which actually is higher than the statewide average. I think that we used.
And, and that's fine, you don't have to.
We used um. 20,000, so that would be higher. So we actually did use for this budget iteration. Um, what we thought ACSD would be.
Okay, I just know that it's, that's inconsistent with what the, the report says you're going to use the statewide.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Didn't seem realistic. So, so the next question is um. The, on transportation, I think you had $180,000 budgeted for transportation. But um, the report indicates it's not clear how you're going to, you haven't worked out how you're going to provide transportation, so I'm, I'm. I'd like to understand what the basis is for um, for that as a, as a budget item.
It's the current Betsa contracts, the, so the Betsa contract that's in place. At Mount Ave and ACSD has a per rate route amount, per route rate amount. And that's what we're using approximately escalated.
And it's. Is that for the, the prior year or does that reflect the, because I, um, my understanding, I read through some material, my understanding is that they've. Uh, there's a new contract and, and the costs have gone up significantly.
Yeah, they did go up significantly and I believe that we are using. Um, what we believe the actual amount would be in FY '24. We did escalate that cost.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Are there, is it able to be a direct linear evaluation as it compares to what they're using right now through ACSD? Um, just thinking, were there efficiencies with routes that, that included Ripton? But when Ripton is standing alone and only on a bus by itself with so few children, how does that work?
Well, the bus that goes up there right now, so there's a bus that goes up for Hancock and Granville. That ACSD sends up that um, we believe would still be able to be used to get secondary students down because they go right by Ripton. So we don't have a separate secondary route. We believe that those secondary students would still be able to utilize that to get to the middle school and the high school. But the elementary route um is just one route. It's one, one bus.
And they, and that had always been standalone?
Yeah.
Okay, and um, you say you believe that you'll be able to use the secondary bus without cost? Is that something you guys have been able to secure an agreement on or would? Have had conversations that at least. Support that assumption?
Um, yeah, if I could jump in here and I do.
I do, I do have to jump off as well, I'm very sorry.
I, no, that's, that's fine. I, I think we can, we'll, we'll, we'll have some follow-up questions for you probably. Um, uh, but I appreciate you staying on longer than you had planned for, Brittany, it's uh very helpful.
No problem.
Uh, one final, I guess one final question before you go, Brittany, and I'll let you run, but in, in your professional judgment, um. What's the likelihood of success uh um for this all working out for a July 1st go live? Would you put it at 100%?
The likelihood of it, no, I would not put it at 100%, but I don't know if I would assign a percentage. I think that. Um. For me right now, the biggest concern is figuring out the transition piece, so. Figuring out how that funding mechanism is actually going to work because there's no roadmap in place for this. There was a roadmap in place for unification. It's much easier when you're bringing everyone together. There's no roadmap um for taking it apart and what taxing authority you have and how to raise those funds, but you can't. Flip the light switch on at July 1 and expect all your systems to be in place. Um, so from a financial perspective. I mean. I think that the budget itself and the operations themselves are viable. We just have to get our arms around. The, how to get there, the transition piece.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, let.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, so Kim, to answer your question, we have had conversations with um Superintendent Peter Burrows at ACSD. To see about utilizing that bus that goes down the hill. Um, he seemed open to that idea. Um, there's nothing definitive at this point, but we have started that discussion. With ACSD to explore that. Um, there's. Two other questions I do want to circle back to. One is the taxing uh mechanism for the transition. And then also um, I can answer the question about the transition budgets and who's responsible for creating each of those. I do want to be aware of our um. Next experts' time, Tim O'Leary. Um. And so Oliver, if I could turn it over to Tim?
Yep, that's fair, yep.
Great, we appreciate it.
Yep, go for it.
Uh, thank you. Before I begin, just a microphone check, can you all hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Great, thank you. Uh, just a little amendment of what Steve kind of introduced of me. Um, I am volunteer consultant and resident of Ripton. I'll, I'll, I'll share more about that in, in just a moment. And I'll try to speak to, it's just a very different conversation. Uh, it's great to have the bunch of conversation and I think this side by side. Uh, talking about curriculum design, uh, elements and intersections of some uh support systems for students and faculty in a school and. And the desirability of uh employment in, in RSD. I have a prepared testimony, it'll probably run about 17 minutes or so. Uh, thanks for this opportunity to testify this morning. My name's Tim O'Leary and based on my expertise and experience, I'm here to testify that I believe the Ripton School District. Is on track to assume sole responsibility for the education of its students in pre-kindergarten through grade 12. In a manner that will meet education quality standards for July 1st, 2023 start date. In addition to meeting the standards, I believe the newly formed Ripton School District has demonstrated the determination. Intellectual curiosity and work ethic to return a thriving educational community. To the children of Ripton, their families and our entire community. Which flourished for decades, if not more than a century, prior to consolidating with other towns into Addison Central School District. I have no doubt that in imagining and designing and operationalizing, RSD will create a more just and joyful future. For its children that is laser focused on the well-being of every child. They've shown determination to create a district where every child has equitable access to educational opportunities. Every child believes in they belong. And every child creates positive identities about themselves as both individual learners and as part of an educational community. These are the critical foundations all young people need in order to thrive, not only as traditional academic learners. not only as traditional academic learners, but also become the responsible and engaged citizens we also desperately need. I am a resident of Ripton, a father of rising fourth and fifth grade daughters in Ripton Elementary School and an educator of twenty-one years in Vermont Public Schools. I have served during those years as a classroom teacher, a special educator, a teachers association president, an administrator, an instructional coach and curriculum leader, both at the district and school levels and within Addison Central School District and the Champlain Valley School District. I've worked in schools with forty-five students, in schools with thirteen hundred students and many in between. And through this variety of roles and across sixteen Vermont Public Schools, I've engaged directly with administrators, educators, families and students at every grade level from pre-kindergarten through twelfth grade. I currently serve as the curriculum leader and instructional coach for Shelburne Community School. It's a pre-kindergarten through eighth grade public school with approximately seven hundred and forty students and one hundred and fifty faculty and staff. I appear before you today to publicly share my prepared testimony in support of the Ripton School District and my professional opinion that it is on track to become fully operational by July one, twenty twenty-three. To provide evidence in support of this opinion, I'll focus the majority of this on zooming into three specific domains. And for the first two, I'll share a brief summary of my recent professional work within the area so you have some sense of my perspectives. Also share a reflection on why I think RSD is poised to excel within each of those areas and focus. So again, the three areas I'll speak to are curriculum design and coordination, you know, to the degree possible in a short testimony, elements and intersections of Act one seventy-three and multi-tiered systems of support and the desirability of employment in RSD. I recognize that these are just a few of many interrelated areas that are required for a systemic and comprehensive educational excellence and equity. Yet I provide them as evidence that RSD is engaging experts in the field, making progress to understand and meet state standards and that an independent RSD has strengths in all of these areas as well as others. So focus area one, curriculum design and coordination. Over the last six years, I've worked as both a leader and as part of teams in the district and building levels to develop and implement varied aspects of coordinated curricula. A few professional experiences that reflect that work that I've led to develop multi-year digital learning plans at both Addison Central School District and as a team in the Champlain Valley School District. Collaborated with a small team in CVSD to revise literacy assessment and report card language across the district and develop associated scales for K-four educators to calibrate their assessment and reporting in this area. Led all subject areas across grades five through eight, which are middle school years at Shelburne Community School with the goal to articulate a publicly accessible curriculum organized by grade band and subject area learning expectations. I've also been responsible for the implementation of a robust common assessment plan across a large pre-K-eight school and work with colleagues across the district on K-eight literacy and math coordination. In addition, I've led ongoing computer science curriculum development within CVSD with the aim to create more robust and equitable learning opportunities for all students pre-K through twelfth grade. These are just some of the areas of curriculum work I've engaged in during the last six years. And again, I provide it not to pat my own back, but to provide you with a brief summary, to share some perspectives of what I bring to the conversations with RSD and this one at hand. Through my work in all of these projects, I've come to a stark realization that it's been underscored time and time again, people like to make plans and sometimes not follow through. And which is that any curriculum and educational plan for a school or district is only as meaningful as the responsiveness between the steps and the design process to develop a plan, implement it with fidelity, collect and analyze data, assess its effectiveness and approve and refine it again and again and again. It's an iterative process that shouldn't stop when too often in large schools and districts, plans are drafted and put on the shelf. So why does this happen? There are lots of reasons. But here are the ones that resonate with me and what I've seen most often in the field. The newness of, wears off once a curriculum or plan is developed and everything that comes after often lacks the energy initially imagined. The fidelity of implementation, gathering data, analysis and adjusting fall far short of continually improving those plans. And sometimes those processes just become sidelined or the distance between drafting a plan and collecting data is so far apart, the plan feels impossible to change once the data is collected. The feedback loop either becomes too big or breaks down completely. Additionally, in increasingly large districts, principals are not often positioned to be educational leaders or instead managers in a bigger bureaucratic system or burden of conflicting responsibilities and priorities. For an example, last year, the individual who served as the principal of Ripton Elementary School was tasked with not only being the principal there, but to deliver but to deliver special education services at another school twenty-two miles away and would leave Ripton just after ninety minutes or two hours onsite almost every day. I believe if RSD is allowed to move forward and become fully operational, it will have the autonomy and scale needed to build a culture of excellence in education we all deserve. The impact of RSD's plan to develop and contract so that a principal is present in the school full-time, they might be point five principal, but they are full-time in other capacities cannot be understated. With a strong and present educational leader, the responsiveness and responsibility will be a strength of Ripton Elementary School, much as it was before it was part of ACSD. A school will be able to innovate and move together with an agility that larger and more bureaucratic systems prohibit. It will be empowered with the responsibility and flexibility to make meaningful, coherent and iterative change to a curriculum. They won't be a middle manager. They won't leave after morning snack or be asked to fulfill duties that focus on priorities beyond Ripton's students. Their attention and presence will ensure that curriculum will be lived and living with tight feedback loops that will deepen the ongoing process to better respond to student needs and meet state standards. Another aspect of curriculum development I've discussed with RSD is the importance of building a local common assessment plan. Although its educational leader and teachers may develop and articulate the specifics of the student learning opportunities that make up the curriculum, their design must be grounded and continually refined to be in tune with the common core state standards and other SBE and AOE identified standards. To ensure alignment of these, the RSD or the potential mountain SU must also develop and implement a local common assessment plan, common assessment system that includes nationally normed assessments critical to collect comparative data on student achievement. Through guide revision processes to the curriculum to help to ensure that every student has access to the education, educational resources and rigor that they need at the right time in their education and to ensure that all students are afforded educational opportunities that are substantially equal to in quality prepared to all Vermont students and enable them to achieve and exceed state standards approved by this board. While all schools need to develop ways to assess the impact of curriculum and instruction, I believe a small school's nimbleness to respond to needed curricular revisions identified by student assessment data will better ensure educational equity and improve educational achievement for all Ripton students, helping to close the achievement gap that persists in all of our schools. The next section about elements and intersections of Act one seventy-three and MTSS. Again, trying to frame the conversation, think about RSD within it. Again, I plan to approach this topic just like the last, a brief summary of some professional experiences in these topics to provide, again, perspectives that bring to the conversation and a reflection on strengths I see RSD having within these areas. Over the last year, my newest role in education has been very focused on working with others to establish a coherent, multi-tiered system of support model while incorporating elements of Act one seventy-three and understanding the promises it seeks to deliver to Vermont schools and students. In my current role as curriculum leader and instructional coach for seven hundred and forty student pre-kindergarten through eighth grade school, I work alongside literacy, math and SEL coach who lead intervention teams in those areas. Ensure our work is to create coherent responsive system of support for students that strengthens universal targeted and intensive instruction. This includes many things, but some of them are coaching faculty towards more inclusive practices grounded in universal design for learning, designing more responsive and targeted intervention models, leading educators and leaders by looking at data about both individual students and aggregated data across demographics and organizational groupings such as classes, grades, schools. I've also redesigned a protocol for faculty, which guides the first formal steps in brainstorming instructional design choices with colleagues to better meet the needs of students. The protocol's redesign kind of includes elements of Act one seventy-three, which really asks educators to use data to identify individual student patterns of academic strengths and weaknesses and the responses to those evidence-based interventions. I believe that if RSD becomes fully operational, again, its scale allows it to better meet some of the stipulations of Act one seventy-three and to benefit from the flexibility it provides as to who may provide support for students identified as in need of special education. Prior to Act one seventy-three, the determination of specific learning disability and related eligibility for special education relied heavily upon one-time assessments that could be conducted by someone with no previous relationship with a student. In contrast, Act one seventy-three asks us to document the learning story of a student, particularly data around patterns, again, of strengths and weaknesses and responses to evidence-based interventions, including shifts in the classroom instruction. It's my professional belief that if RSD is operationalized, that smaller community of students and faculty and system allow for a quicker and more nimble iterative implementations and trials of variety of interventions and the documentation of this data, which should ultimately result in more equitable outcomes and quicker for all students in RSD, particularly if it's most vulnerable. Act one seventy-three also broadens the definition of those professionals who may provide support and intervention intensive instruction for students on IEPs. Believe that this paves the way for all schools to more efficiently use personnel staff to meet the needs of students served by these plans. While in a larger school, the provision of the act creates certain efficiencies as many individuals can narrow their focus and provide a particular type of support. An intensive instruction in a smaller school with fewer staff members, the same provision allows for much needed flexibility and who may provide services identified in an IEP strengthen some of Vermont's rural schools by more reasonably allocating the resources it already has to respond better to student needs, again, aimed at ensuring more equitable educational outcomes. Regarding the development of a robust MTSS, I believe the success of any such system is, again, in its responsiveness, its fluidity and collaboration between high-quality instruction and intervention and comprehensive assessment, expertise and effective collaboration requires both the attention to creating the system and the interconnectedness of the cogs of that system that actually work together. Similar to what I shared about the process of successfully implementing or not and continuously revising or not curriculum, pitfalls exist in developing MTSS systems and then moving attention elsewhere rather than on the ever-present needed focus of implementation, assessment, data review and defining that system so it works well as a system and not just on paper. Fidelity to continual improvement shapes culture. And Ripton has great strengths here too. Because in a school where everyone knows your name, the system size and physical proximity to one another promotes and supports, supports to be in sync and in constant collaboration. Here in a small vibrant school, an MTSS system can thrive and strengthen cultures of excellence because the fabric of Ripton community is so strong and intimate. The AOE's own screener for MTSS systems draws on the word culture time and time again, focusing on the assessment of culture in eight of the thirty characteristics it uses to gauge a successful, multi-tiered system of support. RSD has an enormous opportunity to tend to the values and practices that shape culture that are just not possible as part of an ACSD and over nine buildings with thirteen hundred students and hundreds of faculty spread out over miles from the Green Mountains to the shores of Lake Champlain. The strength of Ripton's culture to demand educational excellence for its youth is what brings us together today. And in closing my testimony, I want to share that I see a future independent Ripton School District as deeply desirable place to work. This past Wednesday evening, a search on school spring yielded postings for over thirty open positions currently in the Addison Central School District. This is a time where burnout in all levels of public education is creating unreliable and tenuous educational systems. We look no further than some of the situations outlined in Allison's, Allison Novak's article last week entitled Vermont: Schools Sight Dire Struggle to Find Teachers for Fall. The pandemic has forced educators and school personnel to reevaluate what matters most to them. And we are seeing what could possibly be the largest employment migration perhaps of our lifetimes. As educational leaders, faculty and staff continue these reevaluations and professional migrations, I believe an independent Ripton School District offers a bounty of riches to its would-be educators and leaders. Ripton's Elementary School has historically benefited from robust community support and engagement, evidenced in decades-long Ripton Ridge Run, a fundraiser that draws statewide attendance, school-based community pizza and movie nights, or its active and organized parent-teacher organizations. It is in a community that cares deeply for its children, its school and its sense of place. And this care strengthens and continually renews the culture of belonging, growth and continued excellence. And I cannot imagine more alluring attributes to offer those future job candidates of RSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Committee members, questions? Tammy?
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. It's great to hear your passion for small schools and the things that they can certainly offer to students. My questions are going to be a little bit more specific though, to your testimony and also the report. The report simply states that Ripton will comply with sixteen BSA Section twenty-nine oh two and also all other statutes and regulations with respect to special education. That of course includes MTSS. But the report provides few specifics with respect to exactly what services, supports and resources will be available through the school's educational support system and then by extension, that's resources that can be accessed through the multiple tiers of supports. For example, you talk about culture and small schools and connections, but we just also heard from your, in our discussion of budget, that many of those services and supports will be contracted out to people who are outside the schools. So it would be really helpful to me to understand a little bit better when we talk about multi-tiered systems of support in the context of the small school, right? Where we have these intimate connections that you just talk so passionately about, exactly what resources will be available, what services will be available, who will provide those services and to what extent will those services be itinerant? And how, in what ways they will be connected with Lincoln? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I will, I was not all that much a part of putting the report together. I've been in consultation with the board and I will pass that question unfortunately over to Steve. I say unfortunate because it's a good question.
Could I ask a follow-up question then? Could you clarify what your role has been with respect to developing the report and the plans?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, as you speak to my passion as both an educator and citizen and parent of Ripton and Ripton Elementary School. My role in working with the board so far has been certainly conversational in nature and voluntary. And in full disclosure, as we looked at kind of this report being delivered today and a variety of people who could kind of add, I would use my own phrase of color commentary to that report with a variety of vantageous. We thought, you know, somebody in the field would be intimately aware of the school and some of the work RSD has been doing, that I would add to that.
You certainly accomplished that goal, so I really appreciate that. I do want to come back though, in your testimony, you just mentioned that there had been written protocols and plans developed. And I guess I took from your testimony that you had been a part of developing some of those protocols and plans? So I guess I have two questions. Do those protocols and plans exist now? And are they available to us to review? And two, if they do, what was your personal involvement in developing those plans?
I believe the only part of the testimony where I speak of developing a protocol and plan was in reference to my current paid work and just.
So that was in reference to your work at Shelburne Community Schools, not in reference to the work that's been done at Ripton?
That's true. And I would say it's important. And it's just been part of the conversation when we talk about all the kinds of systems inevitably that will be, continue to be designed.
Jenna?
Thanks. Thank you, Tim, for your presentation and I certainly feel the relationships are.
feel the relationships are at the core and central to the work that we do at schools. And I'd like to follow up with Tammy's question and maybe moving forward in the future to have kind of a comparison between how services right now, MTSS, what does that look like as a system that's currently in place? It is currently in place. And how would that be impacted and what shifts would occur under a new structure?
And Jenna, if you don't mind, I, I guess I just, a question for Steve, because I'm getting the feeling that, that Tim, you're, you're speaking sort of more generally. You haven't been intimately involved, and I think Jenna, your question is really pretty specific. So Steve, I think the question for you is, is of all, all the folks you have on the phone with us today, who's the person who's really been, who's, who's the point person for questions around MTSS and special education specific to what we're trying to accomplish with Ripton?
Yeah, I think those questions are best directed to one of my fellow board members, Joanna Doria. She has her hand up right now, so I think if she can unmute, perhaps she could answer some of those questions.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we, Tim, if you don't mind, I think we'll take you out of the, we'll, we'll, we'll turn to the person who's on point for these questions.
Tim, just so everyone's clear, do you need, I'm assuming you may need to leave? Remember your time.
I do. I was not supposed to be anywhere near here today, and then kind of getting us all here on a Friday shifted. So I do need to leave. If there are questions, I can answer directly or help the board answer directly. I'm more than happy to do that.
So Kim, I see your hand is up. Are you okay if we post? Because I, we're running short on time and I, it sounds like Tim hasn't really been that involved in, in what we're talking about here, so.
I think my question is sort of specific to what he espoused as valuable and important in the work he's doing now, which I think is just something that only he can answer, because I'm, I'm just wondering then, I certainly heard how that works with coaching support and place-based professional development and leadership. And I am, while I certainly appreciate those values, I'm not sure that I see them necessarily reflected in the budgeting or the planning that's been articulated for us either in this report or in the proposed budget. So I, I heard your passion around that. I understand it. I, I heard from a, a school district that really employed those sorts of supports very effectively in developing staff and looking at student challenges in a cohesive manner across professional learning communities and otherwise. I just am not sure whether that passion I hear from you and your current experience, I'm trying to transfer that to what we're seeing as a proposal, and I'm not seeing it. So I wonder if you see that somewhere or you understand that to be somewhere that wasn't obvious.
I, I would, Jenna, I, I don't, I can't point to it in, in the report. I, I would say, as you look at the structures of, of a report and meeting standards, I'd, I'd look at the heart of the matter, too, which I know you do. And I think putting together that report so quickly in the last few weeks and the board had, you know, I, I think has, has done a great job with that and is everything in there, you know, and, and connected? Probably not. But I guess, again, bringing in voices that can add that color commentary to it, I think speaks to the work to be done to have, you know, to, to take those values and, and make it part of the plan, right? As you've kind of indicated, was not part of the report.
So if we could shift now, Steve has indicated Joanna Doria is the point person for questions on special education. Jenna, I know you had some questions. So if we could spend the next, say, thirteen minutes there, I do want to make sure we reserve at least, I'd like to turn next to the principal author of the report after we can get through some special education questions, so maybe about nine-thirty or so. So Jenna, I don't know if you want to restate your, your questions for Joanna?
Around the impact of the, the shift in structure for MTSS, who's, what's in place right now and what would be the impact of changing?
I think for this answer, I'm going to draw the committee's attention to page fifty-three and fifty-four of the report, and it is a status report. So I want to make clear that we have identified all the players that are going to be involved in this transition. We have really close communication with students on educational plans, and we are, we've yet to specifically identify all the needs. So until the needs are identified, it's hard to put in the status report those specific details. What we can commit to is everything that is included on all of those plans, all the IEP and five oh four plans are going to be continued and maintained. And so the commitment from, from our board and the ongoing communication with the players involved, which includes a special educator, it includes two special ed directors, is, is how I'll answer that question at this point.
So Joanna, if I could, a follow-up question. I guess who's from, you know, of your consultants, your, your experts, like, what work has been done to review the current, because you identified, you don't know what the needs are, but the needs are already identified as part of the IEP. So what work has been done to review the existing IEPs to identify the, the required services?
So I do have, it's FERPA-protected, so all that information based on our, on our size needs to remain confidential. But as a board, we have the ability to review those IEPs pre-K through twelve. So I have all of that information. It's a snapshot in time, as I assure you, I'm sure you understand with special education. So we, you know, it's a little difficult to talk to what is going to be solidified in the future. But what we can do is commit to the process of the transition of those records and the commitment to providing those services. So I, it's, it's tricky to have. I have been talking with the provider of the majority of those special education services at Ripton Elementary School. We are in close communication. We're working together over the summer. And so it is with more of an informal, you know, informal consulting role, the feasibility of maintaining those services isn't, she thinks it's definitely feasible to maintain those services.
But on those services, so there's, you spoke out one special educator, but there are many other related services. So do you have an inventory of, of what those services are and what the FTE numbers look like for those services?
Yes, we do. We have that information. Again, it's FERPA-protected, based on our size. But we know with MTSS, there is flexibility in meeting those services. I know at the district level, they've gone to creative lengths to providing SLP, like having a remote person come in to provide SLP services. So we know that there are definitely ways to meet all of those FTE in terms of OT, PT, SLP, you know, all of those tier-three intervention supports.
Tammy, and then Jenna, and then Kim.
Thanks, Joanna. I'm going to circle back to Jenna's question as well. I think we're both sort of talking about the same thing, which is, first of all, I appreciate that you're doing an IEP inventory. I don't understand your resources. But at the same time, multi-tiered systems of support are not just about students with IEPs, right? These are about students with diverse learning needs across the spectrum, and that includes early intervening services, right, as well as tier-one and tier-two supports. So I, I really am very curious to understand sort of what it is that you have now and what it is that you plan to have, what your educational support system will have in terms of resources and access to those resources. And that goes, I think, a little bit beyond the question of, well, we can get SLP services through some sort of remote access, right? Like, there's also a quality dimension here, right? And so I'm curious, what, what, what work is being done around that piece? And I expect that that needs to be in coordination with Lincoln, because I am understanding that a lot of the services and supports are intended to be provided at the supervisor union level. But I am very curious to understand much better what exactly that looks like now, what it will look like in the future, and how that's sort of laid out, and understand who exactly is that's developing those plans. And I know, as a board member, you probably have a lot on your plate, but so I would expect that that would be a professional in the field.
Yes.
If I could also, what I didn't see in the report are specific time, timelines, specific dates on those things.
So those conversations are ongoing. I mean, the amount of emails that I've exchanged with the current principal, who is going to be the special ed director for ACSD next year, are, there's a long list of email exchanges, and she sent me how the district is approaching MTSS. And it's sort of, you know, I've yet to get in the details of how it's, how it has played out, you know, how that development has, how she anticipates MTSS to be incorporated in, in Ripton Elementary School next year. And so that is just something that I know is important, and we will, we will get, you know, I, I have yet to see that to be able to talk to how it's playing out right now. Is that what you, how MTSS is implemented?
Well, I, I think, I think what you're hearing from me and maybe Oliver, and I won't speak for Jenna, but I suspect I'm seeing a nod here, is we'd like a lot more specifics there as a part of our review, including more information on who exactly is consulting with you on that. And also, I'll just add a corollary to all of that, which is, I read throughout the report this intent to work with Lincoln as a part of the new mountain supervisor union, who presume, which presumably would be, right, the umbrella for providing services. And so I think there, this conversation also needs to fold in sort of what exactly is going on with that joint planning with Lincoln? For example, will you be sharing itinerant personnel for, like, what does that look like, right? Because if, in fact, as your report suggests, you're going to be relying heavily on the SU to provide those services, just saying that you're relying on the SU doesn't, especially since the SU doesn't even exist at the moment, doesn't provide us with sufficient information to make a determination about whether or not, or to what extent you are, you have the capacity to meet statutory and regulatory, regulatory requirements?
Jenna, and then Kim.
Thank you, Tammy. Going to ask. But I guess my other, this follow-up is perhaps that, at this point, those tier-one MTSS, like those level of intervention and support are not in place, which there isn't like a side-by-side, because it's maybe not happening. But what would it look like if it was to happen? You know, if you're looking at those quality standards around MTSS and tier-one supports and being able to intervene really early in the classroom level, what would that look like?
Yeah, I think how I can answer that is, at this point in our status report, we understand the requirements of MTSS. We understand how it can play out and the benefits. And, you know, those, the details that come along with that, we haven't developed yet. But we hope to, and we know that it's, and we know that we need to. And, and relying on the SU, we know that we are the SU. So like, we say we rely on the SU, but we know that there's nobody else to pass it off. So we take that full responsibility, and that's the status that we're at right now.
Kim, final question? You're on mute.
Sorry, so many years later, and here we are, still on mute. I apologize. And I guess I don't, I, I am thinking sort of, I don't have the expertise in the areas that Tammy and Jenna are bringing to this. I have questions around sort of the impact of funding as it would happen through Act one seventy-three. I have, it sounds like a level of specificity that hasn't been fleshed out, but it's really important. I have concerns for the fact that there are more grades for whom you will be an LEA than there are those you'll be managing services within the building and wondering how you see that collaboration in retaining responsibilities for students six through twelve while tuitioning as balanced with the responsibilities within the pre-K five and across potentially two districts and an SU. So, and I, I don't want to make assumptions, I just am not sure that I heard that that level of specificity is there, but it is certainly in the regulatory requirements category that would help inform whether or not we view this to be viable.
That, the answer to that, I think, has to do with the hiring of a special ed director. We know that the LEA has to sit on all IEP, you know, the, the, all IEP meetings that are not just maintenance meetings. And so we know that that's the responsibility. I'm not a special ed director, but I know we need one.
So, so just a closing question then, and then I do want to transition here. So Joanna and Steve, does the RSD have a Vermont licensed special, special education administrator advising or consulting Ripton on its transition plans here?
I can jump in there and Joanna can correct me. We do in an unofficial capacity.
Official, are you, is there somebody on contract that you're paying who has, you know, has expertise to assist here?
The answer to that is there is no one on contract who is doing that work for us. We have a current employee of the district who we are working with. And we are trying to navigate that space for employees who have great knowledge and a lot of historical understanding of these situations and trying to leverage that in that, this status report to you all. And at the same time, acknowledging that that person does not have the space to necessarily kind of jump fully into a consulting role. That is a situation we have come across a number of times in this process. And it's just something we are trying to work through. It's an area where there is more to be done. And as Joanna said, we fully acknowledge that. In this status report, we wanted to share with the State Board of Ed where we are at.
Okay. A very quick Tammy, and then I want to transition to Mr. Patrick.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Quick, quick question, Steve. And I understand you have someone in house in Ripton that's advising you on an informal basis. My, my question, though, is in your conversations with Lincoln, because now you're creating an SU in partnership with Lincoln, is there, is, do you envision having a consultant that is, that will help both these organizations look across the independent school districts to think about this and what this might look like as an SU?
Yes, I mean, from this conversation, I'm very much thinking that is probably in the cards down the road. And if there's additional questions that the State Board of Ed would like answered specifically after this meeting or in one of the following meetings, I'm happy to take those questions and work on securing answers to those. I do understand the gap that exists of being aware of what's required and the follow-through to make that happen. You know, this, this is a, very much a status report of where we are at currently.
Understood, understood, and not trying to poke you too hard. It's just, the issues, as I'm sure you appreciate, around our struggling learners are really important to make sure that that is really buttoned up and is a part of this process. You know, we've got a couple of weeks going on here, so if you could come back to us and let us know the status of that conversation around securing an external consultant and how you might be working with Lincoln as sort of a real-time update, I would find that helpful. Thank you.
Yes, certainly.
So, so Mr. Patrick, I'd like to turn you, before we run out of time here, you've been identified as the principal author of this status report, so.
Oliver, one quick question. We also have Jeff Valance on the line.
Okay. Well, I, I want to make sure, because we keep a lot of, there are a lot of questions about the report, so I want to make sure we start with the, the principal author of the report. And, and so, Mr. Mr. Patrick, if you could introduce yourself. I didn't, you're the one person I, we did not receive a CV from, so if you could describe your, your expertise as it relates to education, K through twelve education generally, and more specifically Vermont K through twelve education, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Dylan Patrick. I'm the founder of Holistic Impact Foundation. It's in New Yeah, absolutely. So my name is Dylan Patrick. I'm the founder of Holistic Impact Foundation. It's a New Hampshire based nonprofit. And we, one of our platforms, we, you know, we work with education consultancy, research and media, all with the intention of supporting and empowering people and enriching communities. One of our focus areas is rural communities. And so for context, my role has not only been this report. I've been helping Ripton since November 2021 in a variety of roles, strategic planning, communication facilitation. You know, I've spent the last, HIF spent the last 10 years developing a human development model. So we have experience in that. As far as myself specifically, I supplied the, the, the deck about the organization because it's not just myself, it's our institutional knowledge at the foundation. I do not have experience as it relates to this report in Vermont education. I've worked with, like last year, we completed developing a preschool in northern New Hampshire. That is functioning at this time. It's the Curious Cottage Preschool. We have been involved in a lot of research over the years in terms of the human development, but in terms of Vermont specifically, we do not have the background. However, with our research background compiling a report. And to be clear, my role was not to speak for the Ripton School District or for the information we presented. It was to compile, organize and present the information. So that was, that was my role in that report. You know, some of the, excuse me?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to be really clear. So I'm not, I'm hearing that you don't have any K through 12 experience.
I worked in a middle school in New Hampshire. So, and this is my personal background as well. So I graduated from college in 2008. The economy was in a tough position. So plans to go to grad school for education were canceled. And so I found a way into education as a, at first a long-term sub and then a para educator. And I was working towards my, in New Hampshire, they have an alternative certification program. And so I was working towards that. And that was in 2010 and I was away, a test away from doing it. However, the school I was working at was looking at making cuts. I was a single 25 year old. And so I decided that I would resign my position rather than having someone with a family and a spouse out of work, lose their job. And so I stepped away. So I never got that certification. But what I did do was because I'm so passionate about education and human development, was I've committed the remaining of the time, the time between now and then to researching, developing and building an organization that's able to help and empower people. One of the best ways to do that at scale is to work with an organization like the Ripton School District and help them achieve their educational goals and to ensure that young people are receiving the education that they need. But, so that's my background, but it's not specific to Vermont. But in terms of my role in this specific report, yeah, you know, the background in professional writing and research is certainly there. So again, my goal for the report was to compile and to present the work that has been done by the Ripton School District and its experts. And to present that information in a way that can be useful. And for context, I think it's really important again, to recognize it as a status report. It is not a conclusion of definitive outcome. You know, this is where the board is, the school district is at today, July 22nd. You know, I think that they have done a very good job at outlining the areas that need to be addressed. In terms of MTSS, that's one area that we approached Tim O'Leary about. So with his background in, in MTSS in the future, it is an area he is going to be able to help ensure is effectively applied and maintained.
Okay. I just want to be clear when you, your reference about this as a status report, and I go back to the statutory charge, what, which was that, you know, the report needs to detail the actions that have been taken and the actions that will be taken with, along with a timeline. And I think as you've heard from several members, we're a little concerned. The details are fuzzy in many places. It's very aspirational, which is, it is always a good thing, but I'm having a hard time myself sort of pinning down the specific steps that are going to be taken. And most importantly, when they're going to be complete by. So I, if, you know, I can circle, I want to circle back to some specific questions in the report.
Can I touch on that quickly though? Cause I just want to make sure we stay, and I've been listening as everyone speaks and I certainly appreciate. You know, I saw this as a great opportunity, this report, to be honest, you know, because I think that when you're trying to do something as multi-layered and complex as needs to be done to have a successful launch in July, it really helps have specific areas to focus on and to have a check and to, you know, I think communication consistently between the district and the state board of education is important, you know, because there needs to be an understanding where everyone is at, because the variables continue to shift. And consistency of communication is really important, which I think we can all agree on. One thing that was mentioned earlier and that relates Mr. Olson to the timeline and specific dates. There was a, there was a typo on that indicator for the November 5th. It should have said agreed on methods of securing the phase two funding for the 2000 or the transition budget of phase two. So I apologize for that because that's a, certainly a big difference between securing and having an approved plan. Because it does involve that coordination with the town of Lincoln and the town of Ripton.
And, and the legislature, because you're seeking an appropriation from the legislature.
And that is something that is under exploration. So that at this stage, because the focus has been so heavily on, you know, identifying and establishing a functional and realistic budget, you know, because if, if, you know, it's, it's, it's only, you know, if you're building a house, you have to be very methodical and you have to have a foundation to stand on. And, you know, developing the budget has been a, a top priority to make sure this is financially feasible. And so now that we're able to move in place, and then there's been the moving part has been acknowledged as well. With Lincoln's involvement in this, in March, they were able to actually move forward and having discussions about working together on this. That, you know, we're trying to just establish the foundation and have the budget set. So now we're looking towards those other details that need to be followed through at the, at this point.
So when is the budget? Cause I, when I was looking through the timeline, I, I didn't see anywhere in the timeline when, when you're actually going to go to the voters for approval of the budget.
In regards to the transition phase two budget?
Any, any, whether phase two or the, the next, the first fiscal year, I didn't see that anywhere in the timeline.
Phase, well, phase one has already gone to the voters this year.
Talking phase two and, and, and the first fiscal year.
Yep. So phase two, once we get some clarity on exactly what that mechanism will look like. As Dylan alluded to, we have identified a couple of different potential mechanisms approaching the legislature about an appropriation is currently one idea that it sounds like there's some potential for that to work. And I think that idea.
Can I stop you there, Steve? So when you say that there's potential for a legislative appropriation, where's that coming from?
So my understanding is that when consolidation occurred, there was some appropriations made to facilitate some of that process. And there's been some questions about, is there the feasibility of doing the same thing in this situation as an SU would potentially be established with Lincoln? That is only one potential mechanism we are looking at for funding that transition, phase two transition budget. The other two mechanisms, it sounds like there, we could have the town vote on that as a one-time spend. And they could decide whether to approve it or not. I'm not certain to your question earlier about how that would apply to the grand list or not at this time. That's something that we are exploring. And then the other is, it sounds like there is some abilities for school boards to borrow. And so those are kind of the three potential options that we would be looking to utilize for that phase two budget. I think once we nail down which of those options is the most feasible and will work, we will develop a timeframe to pursue that. So I just wanted to answer that question because I know going back.
But on, on, on the phase two, you, you mentioned you, you don't know how that's going to work if, if you put that to the voters, but you already did that for phase one. So how, what's the taxing mechanism for, for, for what's already been voted on by the voters? Is that going to just show up on everybody's, oh, Mr. Patrick?
Yep. So on number three, there's a, a item on the timeline going forward, communicate with the town. And this is an area where I think the Ripton School District has done a very good job in this process, is communicating with their town and not surprising them and giving them a chance to hear the information. And, you know, similar to what they did prior to the agreement on the phase one transition budget, outline whatever the steps, outline the costs, outline the consequences.
And so my, my question is a really, Mr. Patrick, my question is a really specific one because we have a statewide education funding system.
Yep, I know.
So you, so how, how, how is that tax being levied? So, you know, does this show up on the tax bill for all the property owners in Ripton?
So that's to be determined. To answer your question, but when they would communicate.
Phase one, this already, you guys already voted.
I know, one second please.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Olson. So I'm, I can only answer in specific areas. You asked, when would they communicate with the town? There is.
No, I didn't, I didn't. I asked, I'm asking a question about the tax for phase one. And I don't know who is going to answer that question. You already voted in May. How is that tax being levied? That's my specific question.
So the specific answer that I have at this time is that I am not certain exactly how that tax was levied. What I can do is talk with our town clerk. It was a line item in our town budget. And I can get back to you with the answer to that question for the phase one budget.
Okay, thank you. Cause that also is going to apply to, to phase two. And that's a big question because you can't put a line item in your municipal budget to pay for education expenses. Tammy, Lyle, and then Kim.
Steve, just to follow up on, on that line of questioning, right? So on page 11, you talk about the, the, the potential for legislative appropriation, but that wouldn't be until next summer at this point, right? You talk about a potential tax. Sounds like we've got some, you're going to try to get, answer some questions on that, but timing is ripe, right? And we talk about a potential loan. I just want to note that these are for expenses between January 1st, 2023 and July, I mean, June 30th of 2023. So time is pretty short on figuring this out. And I didn't see anything in the report about contingency. Right? So one of the things we have to determine is like, is this going to, like, can you get the work done? And part of getting the work done is phase two. So what would be really helpful to me is to have a timeline for when it is you're going to know the answer to these questions. I, I, I know there are a lot of moving pieces and, and, and I can hear and I can see you're doing your best to sort of get them all answered. But to me, this one is really foundational. Because if you don't have the money or you don't have the ability to secure the money to engage in all these things that have got to happen in phase two, then this is all a non-starber, right? And I think at least one option's off the table because you're not going to, I don't see how you can get a legislative appropriation at this point by next, you know, by January 1st, which means you're down to two other options, which are pretty time sensitive. So if you can put me at the top of the list of things you get back to us on, sort of a timeline for that and some more specifics about how, how you're going to sort of unwind and get some detail. I think that's really important because without that money, none of this can move forward.
Yeah.
Sorry to get at you, Steve. I know you've got a lot going on and this is a hard conversation. So please don't take it as me trying to undermine. I just, it's just really important.
No, I think I speak for the entire Ripton School Board. These are not necessarily fun conversations. Sometimes they're a little uncomfortable. These are necessary conversations and the end of this all is providing supervisory services for the children of Ripton and potentially of Lincoln. So these are necessary. I understand that. And I will get back to you with a timeline for that. One thing I will say is that this process has developed if we, as we have gone. When we started, nowhere did we anticipate a phase two transitional budget. You know, we anticipated phase one, but then with the realization of Ripton will need a superintendent well before to go live date. I know that sounds very logical to those in the ed world, for those of us who are starting an SU. It was something we learned. And so we have learned that and now we are trying to adjust the financial realities to go along with that. So yes, I will get you that timeline.
Totally understood. It's just, I think we need to have, and even if you don't have the answer, having a timeline for having that answer and knowing more about the process you're using to get that answer would be really helpful. Okay.
Lyle and then Kim.
Tammy, ask my question. Thank you.
Kim.
I think the timeline is, is really important. And I am really trying to figure out how Lincoln is contributing their part because I'm not exactly seeing that the numbers add up. I see the disclaimer that it will be less because the cost of the superintendent who may start in January is a cost for a full year. And it would only be covered under the transition budget for part of it. So I, I think I'm understanding why these, maybe why these numbers aren't adding up. What I'm really struggling with is sort of an answer Larry to Oliver's question is you all have voted on a $35,000 transition budget. We don't know how that's being taxed out. We do know it cannot be paid for out of the, the town's budget as an education related expense. So that I'm sure you'll get back to us with an answer on that. But there's an assumption here that Lincoln is spending 35,000 they've not voted on. That would have already been part of this transition till January. And then will be in a position to be able to win a vote in the midst of so many moving parts in their community with respect to the unification of the two SDs down there. Their role as advisory in that vote. There are multiple votes happening down there and I'm, I just don't even know that I see where the opportunity would be to have warned this. They have a responsibility for so many moving parts. I just, help me understand what happens if they can't be part of sharing these expenses. Even if they were ultimately somehow able to be part of this new SU for July 1 of next year. Just for a frame of reference, when EWSD came together, there were, there was 18 months for transition planning. So this is a complicated. I have real, this is an area I have some real experience with how hard it was with two superintendents working towards one unified district.
So Kim, just so I understand the question, the, your question is about, you would really like to understand if Lincoln is in a situation where they do not get approval for that phase two transitional budget. Is that, do I understand you?
I guess I'm just not sure that I understand that they had voted for a phase one transitional budget. They weren't operational to do that. So I'm, where is this first 35,000 coming from? How is that assumed? How is that executed on in their community? And then what scenario happens with respect to them being in a position to put forth another vote for another transition budget? I, I'm really, you all have had a little bit of a head start on this and were able to win a vote for that part. A lot of this presumed shared expense in this transition that I can't see logistically how that happens, but it's written in here as though it's assumed. So help me understand how you got to that assumption and how it actually can be executed on, aside from how it's taxed. Cause that is a huge question that we don't even have an answer for the one that you all voted on and were able to vote on. But let's presume that gets figured out. How does this work for sharing expenses with Lincoln?
I will certainly get that. I will certainly get that figured out and get back to you on that. As far as Lincoln, um, I'm not exactly certain kind of how they are going to stack all of those ducks in a row to make that all happen. Um, I
If they don't, then Steve, your presumption in this transition requires shared expense. So what happens? Like not knowing that is, feels concerning for your assumptions to be able to move forward with the transition.
I think at the point that Lincoln is not able to move forward in their space, as I stated earlier, um, I have seen no indication that Ripton as a standalone supervisory district will be able to do it. So if that is the space that, that circles us back to, um, then I do not think that we would be a viable operation.
So then I guess in the, in the follow-up, um, timeline question, can you add that you inquire with them specifically how they intend to fund the transition assumptions that you've made in this report?
Yeah, I can.
Timeline is for warning such appropriation from their community.
Yeah, I can certainly get back to you all with that. Um, there was a question earlier about those transition budgets. Ripton developed our phase one transition budget as a board, kind of taking some educated guesses at what we thought we would end up needing for funding. Um, I can't speak to how Lincoln's phase two, phase one transition budget was developed. The phase two budget has been developed, um, with personnel from both Lincoln and Ripton together, um, with a woman named Jeannie Albert mainly heading up the development of that budget and then Brittany reviewing it as she said. So that's to circle back to the question on budget development. I know that came up earlier.
But I've got a question that I'll turn back to you, Kim. Uh, so, so Mr. Patrick, on page, uh, six with a timeline, there's a milestone in here to hold a vote on school choice designation, August thirty-first. Yep, uh, but on page thirty, it says that it is under understood that RSD will need to take necessary steps to formulate and communicate the specific designation process in accordance with um, sixteen VSA eight twenty-seven and plans to do that at its first regular board meeting in September. So.
Okay, so that's a typo, but the meat of that is the plan is, because it's on, the discussion about many of these topics are ongoing, just there isn't a defined answer to it yet. Um, and so one of the, one of the important topics is how to designate. Um, the board has not concluded um, what their desired plan would be yet. And so they have to finish doing that so then they can then communicate with it, with the town. So I apologize for that, that inconsistency in the, in the text.
Okay. So, but then what's confusing is also on page thirty is it seems to imply that you're going to be pursuing or at least investigating, uh, designation, uh, which requires a vote. Uh, but then on page thirty, it says, quote, Ripton parents or guardians of students in grade six through twelve will be able to either by petition or selection, choose a public approved independent or an independent school, meaning education quality standards. RSD is committed to supporting all Ripton students and their educational wellbeing and community support and services will be made, made available. So that seems to imply that regardless of whether you choose to designate, that the board seems to, uh, intend to support any petition that might come before it. So I'm a little unclear what the position is there.
Yeah, I think that, and, and there was a conversation that was had recently and I, um, excuse me if I can refer to, I believe it was Joanna that we had, we were discussing, or it was Molly, I'm sorry, that, um, it's been a lot of conversations, but, uh, Joanna and I had a conversation and she was explaining to me this process. So maybe that would be the best way to go to the source of how that paragraph was compiled. Joanna? If, if that's okay, sorry.
Yeah, I was looking at the AOE guidance and I thought by statute that the board had to consider all petitions from parents and, and I can cite the AOE guidance that I was referring to.
Yeah, no, that's, you're, you are correct. Yeah, there is a process to petition, but the way this is written is that it implies, um, that the board is, it would be supportive of those requests. So that's why I was a little unclear about what the, what the exact position was.
I think supportive of the request is definitely that, uh, plan that we have. How we follow up with those requests remains to be seen.
Okay.
We want to definitely support any, um, parents or guardians or families wishes and, and hear from them.
Um, Kim?
I'm sure that prompted another question for me, which wasn't my original, but I think um, presuming the vote of a board on a petition for a request that's outside of, let's say, the community decided to designate and then the board stating a presumption to approve petitions I think is dangerous territory. So I'll just, I'll just say that as a comment based on what I was just hearing and maybe I misunderstood. Um, I think my question however is, um, I know that you were trying to estimate for transition costs. Do you have a sense of how you're doing on year-to-date? Um, expenditures related to the projected tuition costs for phase one? Like, are you, are you within your thirty-five? Are you within the overall seventy that would be if you were sharing it with Lincoln who's yet to vote for that?
Yes, we are well within that thirty-five.
Okay. And you're feeling as though you're tracking in a way that is, um, that what you have appropriated currently is adequate to meet that needs through the end of the year of thirty-five solo?
Through the end of the year, thirty-five solo, um.
End of December, because you don't get a second, it sounds as though there's not a second um, request for appropriation or vote for the second phase of the transition. And that wouldn't be effective until July one, twenty twenty-three.
Um, that's.
January one, January, I apologize. So I guess end of year, I mean, end of the calendar year. Does that thirty-five get you in your transition planning through the end of December? Thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I think a lot of that question depends, um, on the resources needed for hiring of positions and you know, in the report, it identifies that there's some different potential strategies we may utilize to pursue candidates. And if, um, things like school spring are utilized, those obviously have less impact on a budget than other more expensive ways. So, um.
I guess, so I'm, I'm sorry, Steve. I, I had a question earlier and I know it wasn't a question for Brittany. And I think it is for you. Sped consulting on page eleven for Ripton is zero. And this is an area that we've probed on many questions. And I'm trying to understand how the thirty-five thousand dollar budget adequately addresses the concerns regarding sped consulting to answer the questions regarding MTSS and all those others that Tammy and Jenna and especially had, had, um, poked at that Oliver as well.
So I think part of that is, um, Lincoln pulling that out separately as its own line item. I think for those of us on the Ripton Board, we understood some of that consulting in terms of the supervisory consulting and the curriculum. Um, they decided to kind of pull that out as their own line item. So that's one mitigating factor I'd point to in that space and explain how we would cover some of that cost. The other piece is again, we have a local resource who we really lean on. That individual is employed currently and is not in a space where they are willing or have the time, um, to fully come before the state board of ed as a full-fledged consultant. So that is one thing that we are using that is not a paid consultant to do some of that work.
Thank you. I just, I, I'm sort of cataloging the area and focus of our questions that we need for you to come back to us. And that seemed pretty inconsistent and uh, maybe a little proportionally out of whack. Um, if it's two thousand for advertising and recruiting, this, one of the most substantial questions is whether or not the SD is prepared to, um, meet the regulatory requirements regarding special ed services. And to have that either be zero or frankly even absorbed within twelve thousand for supervisory consulting, curriculum consulting and sped consulting. I don't know the ongoing or the current going rate for consultants in those areas. I just know that that area of need of responsiveness is what I'm hearing to be among our greatest concerns. And I hope that that can be considered in what you have either already been approved to spend or how you allocate perhaps adequately to make sure that's addressed with someone who has the time and is willing to put in writing responsiveness regarding those areas of work.
Yeah, certainly understood. Um, Oliver, one question, um, as far as time.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're four minutes over. So I, I do want to bring this. I know Tammy's got a question. I want to, uh, Tammy, if I can go to you and I do want to try to wrap, wrap this up.
We do have one paid consultant on the line who has not addressed the state board of ed that I really would like to get the opportunity to address you all. So, um, if that could fit in the agenda, that would be really appreciated.
Yep. Um, okay. So what, oh, so.
To sort of hold my question with, with the hope and understanding that, that we might have another opportunity for Steve and his team to come back before speaks. I, I, I think we have a lot, like, I have a number of questions. It's, I would appreciate it. That's it. I know you've got a paid consultant on the line. So let's hear from that person. And Steve, if you would mind bringing some of your team back to talk to us next week and let us ask some more questions, I would appreciate that.
Certainly.
So Steve, um, uh, I'll let you introduce your, your next, uh, consultant. And if you could just be, uh, help us understand, um, his, his role and, 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 and focus area, that would, that would be great.
All right. Um, yeah. So the consultant, I believe I see him on the line. The initials, uh, JV is Jeff Valance. He is a consultant from, uh, New Hampshire and he has some experience in terms of school administration. And we wanted to bring him on. He has experience running a similar, um, operation in Lyme, New Hampshire. It was two schools of similar size. Um, so we thought you would be a great resource to come and share with you all.
Okay. And, and Mr. Valance, when you join us, um, I just, I, I hear you're from New Hampshire, which, uh, which is, and, and you've got some relevant expertise here, but uh, if you could just, because obviously Vermont has a fairly unique, uh, educational system. So I, I, if you, uh, can speak to your expertise with Vermont's education system and whether you're licensed here or not, that would be helpful to know. Hope you're on mute. How's that? Yep, it's better.
So, um, I'm not licensed in Vermont. I have, uh, not, uh, taught, uh, in Vermont. Uh, I come to the board with, uh, thirty plus years of experience in independent schools, um, and most recently in, uh, public school in Lyme, New Hampshire, in which, uh, we are our own district, uh, we are K through eight school. Um, and, uh, we tuition two high schools. Um, you know, I think just in, just in terms of observing this process, uh, I think that, um, I think the conversations that you guys have had, uh, have been really illuminating, uh, to me. My involvement, um, has really been kind of very early on in the, in the, in the process. And then most recently, uh, uh, very, uh, close to the last few days of this conversation. You know, one of the things that, that struck me is that the reason that this conversation is so helpful is because uh, the state, uh, school board, you folks are helping, um, Ripton understand the areas that, uh, where you need information and where you need clarity. Um, and I imagine in a process that had, would be so as extensive as to re-establishing um, a district, uh, after being, um, assumed into another one. Um, is it fairly?
Uh, Jeff, if I could interrupt you, I, I just want to be clear. This is not just re-establishing a district. This is creating a brand new district. Uh, the, the school district itself might be, is being reconstituted, but the bigger issue and the complex issue where a lot of our questions are focused is actually the creation of a brand new supervisory union that never existed before.
Right. I, I do understand that. Um, and I think that that probably in order for this to be successful, um, the school districts that are pursuing a course like this, similar to Ripton or Lincoln, they're going to need your guidance and support and understanding on what exactly that process looks like, what are the questions um, that you would have. And, and that's why I think just listening today, why that's been probably so helpful from the questions that Kim and Tammy and Oliver and, and, um, um, I think it's Jessica, I don't see her name, uh, in front of me, um, would have, because I think that just in, in hearing, uh, the process that Ripton has been going through, um, they've been putting a lot of time and effort into trying to anticipate what those questions might be. You know, I think that fundamentally what we're talking about is, you know, you have a commu- a small community uh, that is looking to retain, uh, its school. I understood that to be the process initially and then it's expanded. But you're looking at a small community looking to maintain its, uh, one of its anchor institutions, uh, which is a small school. Um, I think from, from what I look at it from a statewide, uh, Vermont has been pretty, um, advanced in the, in the sense that it has, uh, opened up its, uh, um, approved schools to include independent schools, uh, to improve, uh, New England academies, uh, of which I have worked. Uh, all those things are incredibly implementable. And I think that what I see, uh, Ripton trying to do is to add uh, a, uh, a component or a niche or a, an option uh, to, uh, Vermont, uh, to the Vermont, Vermont area, uh, around Ripton and Lincoln. To consider a school that is small, to consider a school that, um, has multi-age classrooms, uh, to commit, uh, to consider a model of a school in which, um, knowledge of students, size, scale, uh, is intimate. Uh, I think that's something that is not only appealing for, uh, potentially for parents. Uh, certainly, uh, it seems that it's very attractive to the community of Ripton and Lincoln themselves.
And, and, and sorry, Mr. Valance to interrupt, but our, our note taker needs to leave here in, in ten minutes. And I, I want to um, kind of narrow the focus here. What, can you tell us specifically what's your role in this process? That, that's what I, I'd like to understand. Cause we really need to focus on what's your role, um, and, and, you know, what are your thoughts on the work that you've been doing relative to that role?
Sure. So I think my role has been, uh, most recently as a sounding board of viability of the instructional model uh, for a small school. Uh, in terms of viability of the administrative structure or the viability of attracting, um, professionals to a small, uh, small district were to be approved. Um, so, and, and to point out some of the advantages of education uh, of students in a small community school. So I would say that that has been my role. Um, it's something that I think I believe very strongly in. Um, I also, uh, you know, um, you know, came today because I'm on vacation right now, but, um, you know, when, when it was known that we had to all come today, um, I put that aside, uh, to speak to you folks. Um, that's my role. Um, and you can, you know, kind of take my, my experience in independent schools and, and in, uh, public schools focused on education. Um, I don't think, you know, uh, where the kids come from, uh, changes the kids. But what I've heard today, uh, what a lot of your focus is on is Oliver, to your point, um, how do you create a mechanism of a new district within? Um, the um, the, the legal parameters, the bureaucratic parameters of the state of Vermont. I have not played a, a role in that. I would hope that bureaucracies and those things could be worked out. Uh, in a very collaborative way so that models of education, whether they be public, whether they be independent. Um, could be successful, because I think ultimately that's what we're all looking for. Um, and I can speak very uh, directly to the fact that you have a, a group of. Community members at Ripton and in Lincoln uh, that are very committed to the education of their kids and their neighbors' kids. And um. In, in my mind have done Vermont a great service in having these conversations and would hope that. Um, you know, uh, everyone can work collaboratively together so that opportunities like the one they're trying to create. Uh, there's a roadmap to which those things can be successful.
Committee members, very brief questions, uh, because we do need to wrap this up and we still have to take care of public comment. Uh, Kim?
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm, I'm less worried about sort of bureaucracy being in the way of creating opportunities. I'm. More concerned with the structure being in place to meet regulatory requirements. And support educational opportunities for all students pre-K twelve for which they will be charged. So um, I'm, I'm wondering where there has been expertise speaking to that. And if as a paid consultant in either supervisory or curriculum, or I'm not sure which area you were focused on. Where that might have extended or included any um, frame of reference for how to meet those regulatory requirements? Where, was there expertise that you were able to bring to that conversation?
My involvement um, did not extend into those areas.
And so within the supervisory curriculum, were there specific areas that your involvement focused?
Well, my involvement has been somewhat brief, as I said, in the very beginning and then more recently here. I think what. Um, what I was asked to come to speak to is uh, the value of community-based schools. Um, and I think uh, and the, the viability of. The administrative structure and the longevity of the administrative structure in small districts.
Generally speaking, not, not specific to this district.
And thank you, and I hope you understood our responsibilities. We have to determine. We have a different responsibility and we were hoping that the expertise brought to bear was going to help inform that for us.
Yeah, and, and that's why I think that the, the conversation today has been very helpful and, and hopefully helpful to. Um, to Ripton, because I think it, it can uh. Can bring some focuses to, in, in, in terms of all the areas there is to work. What are the areas that you are most? Um, concentrated on and that need to be satisfied uh, for your work. Uh, because I think that a lot of the work has been um, at, you know, generalized uh, and, and focused on. You know, the value of the culture of a small school. And I think, you know. I don't know if, if that needs to be sold to you folks. I think what needs to be sold to you guys is. Is, you know, the, really the importance of some of the pieces that you've been pointing out. Um, that's where, that's where the question is, right?
Start, sorry, I've got to try to, Tammy, real quick, and then we do need to close this out.
Two, two, three, two points, one question. First, I don't think anybody here is questioning the value of community schools.
Right.
Let's, let's just level set that. First off, and the second, and the second thing I think that's really important here is, is Kim just pointed out is what our role is, which is to make sure. That whatever school is stood up here is one that is going to provide substantially equal educational opportunities for all students. So let's just level set right there. And my question is, to what extent are you familiar with Vermont's educational quality standards that govern? The work, right, that govern curriculum and instruction in this state? If you're advising on that, I want to know to what extent. Have you read those? Are you familiar with them? Have you executed them?
So uh, again, I've not, that is not an area that I'm working with the district or with, with Ripton.
I'm confused. You just said that you were advising them on curriculum and instruction and developing and sort of that was your role.
No, no, so um. Just in terms of in general, like what, what type of uh. Instruction can take place or, or how do small schools um. Take advantage of their size to create uh, and a culture of um. Of, of instruction. So my involvement in all of this has been more general. Um, my involvement was, you know, it potentially to answer questions about. Um, you know, viability of the, of, of maintaining um, superintendency positions in small districts. Um, but was not involved in some of the um, more detailed and refined. Um, work that it's clear to me that you, you folks need in order to carry out. Um, your responsibilities, so.
I understand is you've, your expertise is, is in sort of the more general construct of small school operations. But you have not engaged with Ripton, nor do you have the expertise to engage with Ripton. On how to implement Vermont's educational quality standards in the context of a small community-based school. Are, are we on the same page?
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't think that they would have, uh, or I don't think I ever uh, suggested that I did have. Any, any knowledge of um, or I, I would be the best person to speak specifically to Vermont. Uh, you know, uh, in, in those areas.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this, uh, this section up. We've got two agenda items. Uh, I'm going to suggest absent objection. That we postpone approval of the minutes from our last meeting to, to our next meeting. Um, I, I do want to make sure we provide some opportunity for public comment, so at this time. Um, I would ask, are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? Um, if you do, please uh, raise your hand. Um, I see uh, Molly Witters. Your hand is raised. Um, there we go.
There I am. Thank you. Um, I'm Molly Witters. I'm both a member of the public as well as a member of the board. Um, I'm the vice chair of the Ripton Board and, and I'm just hoping to take a moment um, back from the focus of this meeting, which was terrific. And elucidating um, to get a meta view again of where we are and why we're here. Um, because what has happened in this process and um, what continues to happen is that. We as a community are vital and incredibly invested in our school and we believe it should stay open. And not once have we had a person in a position of power, of which you all are, turn to us and say, how can we help you make that happen? And, excuse me, this is emotional to me because we have worked so hard. And um, we thought in our last meeting, in our meeting in September, Mr. Olson, that we actually were seen by you as a, as a chair of the board. That we really needed advocacy within the ACSD and we never got that from you. We turned towards you several times. To look for mediation in our um, interactions with ACSD and, and never got those. Now, and so we, because we're energetic and we believe so deeply in our community, have taken on. The role of trying to stand up a supervisor union, which you all are pointing out lots of flaws in, and you know, there's a balance between adversarial. And constructive, and I think we're kind of in between those two. And what I would like to flip it to is how can we make this really constructive? To allow small communities to not be disenfranchised and not be set on the boundaries like we have been. And so if you determine that, that our mountain supervisor reunion is a terrible idea, which I actually don't believe. I actually think there's a great. Amount of possibility in this model if we get support. Um, but if you determine that, I challenge you to not uh, sweep up under the rug in the sense that. We need to have, to be empowered to have our school open and that is why we're here and um. There are ways you can still do that that are within your power, like assignment to another supervisor reunion. Um, we basically took your assignment as a supervisory district, which it, for all intensive purposes, was initially a poison pill. And we have built a beautiful concept around it and we actually think there's a lot of viability in it. Um, but we can't, we can't do that with, with, without support. And so I, I just challenge you to sort of. Flip some of your like sort of adversarial connections with us to maybe more encouraging. And also um, point us to those people, because whenever I, I'm the person who finds all the people on the board, I'm the person that identifies the helpers. And I would love each of you to be one of those helpers and I would also love you to help me find more, because it, every time I've reached up to the highest levels. The VSB, you all, the AOE, nobody helps us. And so um, what does that teach our students about advocacy? What does that teach our? Students about um, empowerment? Um, it, it really brings up some greater questions and I, I want to just turn to the end of my statement. To remind you of what one of your tenants is um, in your vision statement as a board. You say. We know that democracy and opportunity are vital to our children and grandchildren's futures as Vermonters and as Americans. And we know that education is the most powerful force we have to promote individual opportunity and community self-government, governance. We are seeking community self-governance. We believe in democracy. We've had a school forever. It's been a terrific school. My daughter's there. She's thriving. Um, it, it's encountered troubles, struggles under the ACSD. We, but we. We really believe in our school and we hope that those in the, people in position of power can switch your energy a little bit to supporting that.
Thank you, Molly. Um, we typically as a board don't um, respond to, directly to public comment. It's just. Generally not best practice, uh, but I, I just want to recognize. Your passion and, and enthusiasm and I, I don't want you to feel that the board is somehow. You know, disconnected from that. Uh, we're certainly not, we hear you, we see you. As far as our role as being mediators, it, it's not a role and that, that is, that's the thing that we pointed out last year. We're not. Statutorily, we have certain lanes that we need to work within and we don't have it within our authority to go and become. Mediators in, in, in these local situations. Um, that, that creates conflicts and, and other problems for us. So I, I just want to be clear about that. You know, we have referred Ripton to folks that are, are more appropriate to provide direct guidance. Again, we can't, you know, we're. We're having to arbitrate a lot of these highly complex decisions and we can't be arbiters of these things. Um, when we're uh, you know, directly involved in advising and, you know, we can't guide you on one hand and then. Take a step back and be expected to, to sort of arbitrate, you know, some of these decisions. So that's, that's the position that we find ourselves in and I know it's, it's difficult. Um, at times uh, to appreciate that, uh, but you know, we.
You can assign us to a supervisor reunion. I want to remind you that we expected that was your task and you still have that opportunity.
We, we absolutely do and we're going to be having these conversations. We've been having these conversations over the last few months. We will be looking at this in September, but just as you guys are equally, just as you guys are so passionate about what you want. We're also hearing a lot of passion from other folks who are saying, no, we don't want. Uh, we don't want Ripton or, you know, Lincoln to be unilaterally assigned to us. So our role is we have to be. The, the sort of the neutral arbiters and, and understand we're hearing from multiple people. And regardless of whatever we do, someone's not going to be happy. And I just, I want you to, I, I just hope you can appreciate that. Um, but I do see there's another uh, hand up for public comment and I want to make sure we provide members of the public an opportunity to speak. So there's somebody on the phone, I think. Um, or maybe not anymore. I thought I saw somebody. Yeah, there's a. No, not anymore. Okay. I'm not seeing any other public comment. Um, so I, I appreciate everyone's.
Joanna's hand still up, Oliver? I, I see Joanna Doria's hand.
Oh yes, Joanna, did you, were you looking to address us?
I wanted to add a detail that might have gotten overlooked or lost in this conversation, that Ripton is a Title One town, so we are identified as having. Over thirty-five percent students living in poverty, um, call, you know, with the FRL qualifications. I know that's shifting. So we are a wraparound community. We, we care about all the students, um, and I, I just want to highlight that detail.
Great, thank you. So with that, um, I would, uh, committee, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Already, uh, is there a second? It's been seconded by uh, Tammy Colby. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Uh, all those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. It, uh, it appears that the motion is carried unanimously. Uh, the motion has carried unanimously. We stand in adjournment. Uh, Steve, I'll, I'll reach out to you to uh, work out logistics for the, the next few meetings, so.
Yeah, sounds like plan.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, everybody. Thank you.